...May the 21st, 2019 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the May 7th, 2019 regular meeting. I need your motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Foote.
Trucca.
Trucca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. You also have before you the May 9th, 2019 special meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak to anyone here to address council.
Yes, please.
Name and address, please.
Bill Stoker, 205 North Spring Street. I just wanted to say to the city, thank you very much for the roadwork that is underway. The streets are becoming very nice looking, especially our street, North Spring Street. The guys did a tremendous job out there repairing the street, repaving it. And also, thank you to the voting residents out there for passing the tax levy that allowed this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
None.
Moving on, communications and petitions.
We have three communications. The first one is from the Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council, a council on May 9. The Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently met to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the annual report filed March 31, 2019, by the Enterprise Zone Manager and is for the period ending December 31, 2018. Enclosed, you will find the recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio Vice Code, Section 507.85. A legislative authority that receives home and tax incentives as a council written recommendation shall within 60 days after receipt, hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or me. Sincerely, Joe Wolfe, Chairman, Tax Incentive Review Council. You'll see the attachment on the following page, and this needs to be referred to the economic development.
Okay. I need a motion entry for this economic development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
We have a letter addressed to council, City Council and the administration from Gail Reiser. Thank you very much for the restaurant gift cards that she sent after my back surgery. They were much appreciated. I'm not sure when it happened, but sometime in the past 42 years, Jeff completely lost his way in the kitchen, so it, so they had dinner all set, was a real treat. Thanks again for your faultfulness, sincerely, Gail Reiser, and that just needs to be said.
Don't you like it when she just throws this down in front of that car?
Everywhere I go, I get thrown over the bus.
Okay, I need a motion to accept. All those.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Foote, second by Ms. Sack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
And we have a letter from the Broadways Festival, addressed to council, dated today, May 21. Members of council, the 52nd Annual Broadways Festival will again be held on the streets of beautiful downtown Ussires on August 15, 16, and 17, 2019. We respectfully request the following street closures effective 12:01 a.m. on Wednesday, August 14, 2019, to allow crews to lay cable, assemble water electrical systems, and install safety barricades. Streets will remain closed until 8 a.m. on Sunday, August 18, 2019. St. Dusky Avenue from Mary Street to City Hall, Lorne Street from Walnut Street to Poplar Street, Rensselaer Street from Walnut Street to Poplar Street, Mansfield Street from Walnut Street to Poplar Street, Charles Street from East Alley South to the Wendy's Parking Lot East entrance. We also request the following: use of City Hall lobby and north and east parking lots for the craft show and art show as in previous years. Parking ban on East Rensselaer Street from Walnut to Lane on Saturday, August 17, 2019, will allow parking for visiting queens. Rensselaer Street from St. Dusky Avenue to Poplar Street, closure at 5:30 p.m. on Tuesday, August 13, 2019, for replacement of Rensselaer Street stage as in previous years. Parades are scheduled at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday and Friday, August 15 and 16, as well as 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 17, 2019. The parade route will be the same as in previous years from Perry Street to Oakwood Avenue. We request the following closures, two hours prior to parade times. River Street from North St. Dusky Avenue to Timpin Street, Mary Street from North Walnut Street to Broadway Alley, North St. Dusky Avenue from Mary Street to Irving Street, Mary Street from Poplar Street to North Walnut Street, Liberty Street from South Walnut Street to Poplar Street, Center Street from South Walnut to Poplar Street, Luca Street from South Walnut Street to Poplar Street, and South St. Dusky Avenue from City Hall to Oakwood Avenue. Your continued support and cooperation is very much appreciated. Without your support, the Ussires Broadways Festival would not be the success that it has been for the past 52 years. We look forward to seeing you all at the Boyd Long opening ceremony at 11 a.m. on Thursday, August 15, at the Wyandotte Mutual Insurance Stage on West Rensselaer Street, and also encourage you to participate in the various activities throughout the three-day festival. Respectfully submitted, Amanda Myers, President, Broadways Festival, and Lord West, Director, Broadways Festival, and that has been referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, I need a motion then to direct this to the Health and Safety Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote. Do you put the Broadways Festival request in the Health and Safety? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. It's already Broadways Festival time. Mayor's fine. Okay, moving on. Mr. McKeever, will you get started, please?
Sure will. Ussires City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting met Thursday, May 9, 2019, 6:00 p.m. to 8:39 p.m. Members present, myself, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and Monica Sack, absent. Number one, Ussires City Joint Council, that's Joint Regular Committee meeting, was called to order by McKeever at 6:00 p.m. Public participation was none. Referral from Council President Sis Love said ODOT's paving of Quaker Road, State Route 19, needs to be referred to the Plating Committee. Foote made a motion to make a referral with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Order of committee business, a plating committee. Plating committee began at 6:02 p.m. to 6:16 p.m. Members present, Bruce Trucca, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Number one, Marion Road, Beale Avenue traffic signal. Bruce Branstetter of Branstetter Carroll, Inc., explained that the traffic signal at Marion Road and Beale Avenue needs to be replaced at a cost of $150,000, which was included in the city's 2019 budget. Legislation authorizing the administration to go to bid for the project is needed. Myers made a motion to request such legislation not to exceed $150,000 plus 10%, with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, ODOT paving of North St. Dusky Avenue. ODOT requires final legislation by Friday to proceed with the paving of North St. Dusky Avenue from Perry Street to Quaker Road, including curb ramps and traffic signal installation at Irving Street. The city's share of the project cost is $203,657.50. Although it was noted that ODOT's draft legislation does not include curb replacement, it was emphasized that amending the agency's language could be problematic. Trucca made a motion to request legislation appropriating the city's share of the project cost and directing ODOT to proceed with the project as detailed in the draft legislation, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, ODOT paving of Quaker Road, State Route 19. ODOT requires consent legislation from the city to pave State Route 19, Quaker Road, from State Route 4 to State Route 100. The project abuts the city's corporation line 4.3 miles. Myers made a motion to request such legislation with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. I need a recess to the Plating Committee at 6:16 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the Plating Committee minutes? None. Moving on to Public Lands and Buildings. Mr. Wireball?
Yes, Public Lands and Buildings Committee met Thursday, May 9, 2019. Members present, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, and myself, Chair. First up was land donation. Mayor Jeff Reiser noted that Richard and Helen Michelak, 901 Nevada Road, wished to donate the city 1.306 acres of their land adjacent to Allmeller Park for the use as a nature trail. Legislation is required, but a monetary value to the donation does not need to be included. McKeever made a motion to request legislation accepting the donation with a second by Foote. Motion passed by voice vote. The concrete pile. Bruce Branstetter of Branstetter Carroll Incorporated observed that a large pile of public and private waste concrete at the wastewater treatment plant needs to be ground up at a cost of $100,000. The ground-up material may then be used on various city construction projects. The city does not charge a fee for dumping of concrete at the plant, which has been halted for the time being. Foote made a motion to request legislation authorizing the administration to go to bid for the project, cost not to exceed $100,000, with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Crowder Road Farmland Bid. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that the bid to cultivate the city-owned farmland on Crowder Road was minimal, and that the administration would like to explore, with council's blessing, selling the 5.7 acres for residential development. Foote made a motion to allow the administration to look into selling the property, with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required at this time. Mary Street Bridge. In response to council inquiry, Branstetter commented that he has met with county engineer Mark Baker about the condition of the Mary Street Bridge, which is maintained by the city. Some of the bridge's supports have gotten loose, leading to a depression in the center of the bridge. The matter was continued. Art Park Stage. In response to a council inquiry, Mayor Jeff Reiser reported that the city is still exploring its options for building a stage in the Shines Art Park. One bid came in overestimate, and converting a railroad boxcar into a stage has also been looked into. The city has 14 months left to get the stage built under the terms of the state grant. A decision on whether to have the project rebid will be made early this summer. Joe Arm Brewster, 540 West Southern Avenue, and Roger Rush, 1416 Michigan Drive, added that they have funds to help cover the expense of building a stage. But Reiser noted that the Ohio Regional Development Corporation has rejected the received bid, and that it would have to be rebid before any donations could be accepted. Rush distributed photos of its proposed stage design. The matter was continued. City Parking Lots. In response to a council inquiry, Reiser noted that the administration hopes to have money to repair city parking lots in the city's 2020 budget. Ratliff asked if he had, has had any discussions about the sale of parking lot number two at 220 North St. Dusky Avenue to a private entity. And it was noted that there's private interest in purchase of parking lot number three at 166 North Poplar Street as well. The matter was continued. City Reservoirs. Branstetter, along with Barry France of Diversified Environmental Consulting, detailed where the city stands with the ODNR in regards to the condition of its reservoirs, particularly the pines. Emergency action plans and inundation mapping have been drawn up by Branstetter and DEC for each of the city's four reservoirs, and will be submitted to ODNR through the remainder of the year. The city has received a chief's order from ODNR pertaining to the pines, and has three options there: repairing the reservoir to bring it within state compliance, which could cost more than $1 million, breaching the dam, or selling the reservoir as is. The ODNR is requesting a decision as the pines spillway and embankment are leaking. A hearing with the agency is being scheduled. The cost of bringing enough, Riley, and Off-White reservoirs into compliance remains unclear as engineers are working with the county and the railroads, as well as using the city's EPA mandated asset management to retrieve data and help reduce those costs. Branstetter Carroll Incorporated is looking into other funding options for performing work on the pines. The matter was continued. Wireball recessed, Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:39 p.m.
Questions for comment regarding the minutes from the Public Lands and Buildings? None. Moving on, Mr. Wireball, you act as chairman for finance.
All right. Yeah, Finance Committee met Thursday, May 9, 2019. It began at 7:39 p.m. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself as acting chair. First up was Marion Road and Beale Avenue traffic signal. Plating Committee requested legislation authorizing the administration go to bid for replacement of the traffic signal at Marion Road and Beale Avenue at a cost not to exceed $150,000 plus 10%. Myers made a motion to approve the request with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. ODOT paving of North St. Dusky Avenue. The Plating Committee requested legislation directing ODOT to proceed with the paving of North St. Dusky Avenue from Perry Street to Quaker Road, including curb ramps and traffic signal installation at Irving Street, and appropriating the city's share of the project cost of $203,657.50. Shaw made a motion to approve the request with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Concrete pile. The Public Lands and Buildings Committee requested legislation authorizing the administration to go out to bid for the grounding up of waste concrete at the wastewater treatment plant, at a cost not to exceed $100,000. Shaw made a motion to approve the request with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Arrowhead Drive. Bruce Branstetter of Branstetter Carroll, Inc., wishes to expend Ohio Public Works Commission funds to pay a portion of Arrowhead Drive, and said legislation is needed authorizing the city to go to bid for the project at a cost not to exceed $415,000, which has already been budgeted. Shaw made a motion to request such legislation with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Bike path. Branstetter explained that legislation is needed authorizing the city to go to bid for construction of the Friendship Trail Bridge, Friendship Trail Bike Path, at a cost not to exceed $76,000, with $57,000 funded via an ODNR grant, and the city paying the remaining $19,000. Shaw made a motion to request such legislation with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Next up, the West Oak East Mansville Street Sewer Project. The council previously passed legislation authorizing going to bid for this project at a cost not to exceed $200,000, which didn't include a concrete channel down to this St. Dusky River, or additional pipe, bringing the cost to a budgeted $356,000, after which the low bid came in at $278,924. Legislation is needed, amending Resolution Number 210-2018, to change the not-to-exceed figure to $356,000. Myers made a motion requesting such legislation with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Employee manpower. The current ordinance needs to be repealed and replaced since the last time it had been, the changes didn't incorporate previously updated staffing levels in the Recreation Department. Specifically, the number of head lifeguards should be two, not one. The number of lifeguards, seven, not eight. Substitute lifeguards, four, not six. And two concession workers should be added. In addition, the administration would like to raise the pay range for the laborer positioned in lawn maintenance or the boom mower operator. Myers made a motion to request legislation repealing and replacing ordinance Number 20-2019 to correct the Recreation Department's staffing levels as detailed above, and to change the pay range for the lawn maintenance laborer from a maximum of $10 an hour to a minimum of $10 an hour and a maximum of $15 an hour. Shaw seconded this motion, which passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed, Finance Committee at 7:56 p.m.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes for Finance Committee? None. Moving on to the Health and Safety Committee. Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety met at 7:56 p.m. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers. Item one, codified ordinance 311.01, street obstructions. Council members have received complaints about grass clippings in the street. And Law Director Rob Ratliff was asked about amending codified ordinance 311.01 to include grass and other organic materials. Ratliff vindicated that not adhering to this provision amounts to a minor misdemeanor with a maximum penalty of $150. Bill Stoker of 205 North Spring Street noted that he's seen city workers blowing grass clippings in the street. Ratliff was asked to draft language amending codified ordinance 311.01 to be presented to the committee. The matter was continued. Item two, derelict properties. Ratliff touted the advantages of the city having a naked building ordinance on the books, which he suggested would shift the financial burden represented by derelict properties from neighbors, neighborhoods, and the city to the owners of these properties. His office is preparing anecdotal samples of how some of these properties are impacting the local community. Ratliff was asked why the city agrees to provide services when a derelict property receives any tenant. He responded that certificates of occupancy could rectify that scenario, while a rental property registration would set standards for that class of properties. The matter was continued. Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 8:00 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the Health and Safety Committee minutes? Okay, moving on, service, Mr. Trucca?
Service met Thursday, May 9, at 8:28 p.m. Members present, with Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one was water line expansion. In response to a council inquiry, Mayor Jeff Reiser observed that he was unaware that a couple dozen residents of Stephanie Drive in Liberty Township wanted to be hooked up to city water, but added that the administration would look into it. It was noted that although more than 30 residents along County Road 35 earlier expressed an interest in receiving city water, only five have done so to date. The matter was continued. I recessed the service at 8:32 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the Service Committee minutes? Okay, moving on, economic development. Mr. Foote?
Yes, I called Economic Development to order at 8:32 p.m. Members in attendance were Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Up first was property annexation. In response to a council inquiry about the owner of a property just east of Family Farm and Home on East Mansfield Street, expressing interest in being annexed by the city. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the annexation situation in that part of the city is a hodgepodge, because while a number of properties have been annexed, or would like to be, other properties do not want to be in the city. The matter was continued. Foote recessed the Economic Development Committee at 8:30 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding this report? Can you finish for us, please?
Up next, we had public participation, which we had none. Lastly, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, go ahead.
I asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committee's motion by McKeever and second by Myers to adjourn at 8:39 p.m. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next, we have Traffic Commission. For Mayor Reiser, we don't have any minutes. Are there any traffic, or related traffic questions that you'd like to bring up to the mayor this evening? Mr. McKeever?
The intersection of Beale and South St. Dusky and... Is that a no right-hand turn on that?
Yeah, could be no right-hand turn on that. We voted on that in the last.
Okay.
I was just curious.
Yes, Mr. Foote?
You guys haven't met since the last minute.
That's correct.
That's right. I know, I inquired something about you, and you said you did it the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and relay the committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. We've cleared the city officers. We'll start with Mayor Reiser.
Well, thank you, Mayor President. We've been pretty busy here. Last week, I met with Justin Butcher. He's a plant manager at General Electric, and the nice staff there gave you a wonderful tour and a presentation of some of the history of the plant, and how the processes are made, what their long-term strategy is, and had an impressive group out there, management group, impressive workforce. You know, technological changes have been fast and furious to that industry and most industries too, and they're positioning themselves for the future. And I thank plant manager Butcher for being so hospitable before the scene began. Tree Garden Meeting met tonight at 6 o'clock, and one of the major topics was the planning of Plinestreet, which will be done in the fall to refoldiate that once beautiful tree-lined street, as well as the Past Arbor Day that was done in the July rainstorm. So Karen Wise was in from Ohio Mountain, runs the Head Start program. We had a great discussion with her about the importance of Head Start in the community. Maybe some of you probably attended the original New Hope Open House, which was a former weightcraft building, and very impressed with the level of care provided for less fortunate residents. They do a lot, doing a wonderful job, treating everybody with dignity and respect, and another impressive organization. Cindy, speaking of that, Cindy Wallace of Community Counseling Center. We were in on that meeting, and we had a nice discussion with her about what they do, and she, they're glad they're here. Let me just put it that way. They do a wonderful job. Tonight, we shot a video, Mr. Producer and I, for our Facebook page. Poppy Days is coming up this weekend. I know I mentioned that on tape on Thursday, but we actually worked out better tonight. It's already on our Facebook page. Do not forget Poppy Days. It's a 100-year tradition. Goes back to after World War I. And we're gonna post the history of Poppy Days on our Facebook page also. So there're gonna be a Walmart, Family Farm Home? No, not Family, Walmart.
Harleys.
Harleys and the post office.
Kroger.
Kroger, okay. I got one other free right. Thank you, Gary. So get a poppy, and I guess since we're talking about that, don't forget Monday's event at the cemetery. It's always a very moving event honoring our veterans. And Mr. Hewitt was, you were there last weekend. Some of you were there. Mr. Hewitt, Jake, long time, long time. Usirry and Jack Hewitt was on with a special day ceremony on Saturday evening at the softball field. Dwight Kane was there, and they've been such a great team, and have given so much to the community. And the program there of Usirry's Softball Field is, wouldn't have been anywhere near as good without Jack Hewitt and his skills. So thanks to Jack and Kane, and all who honor Jack, took part in that. And Sunday, I was able to attend the Winter Groundbreaking. And that was at 1:00 o'clock, and the rains started about 1:30, and we got almost all of it in. And so it was a really nice day. So we're gonna congratulate Fred Fox, Rhonda, who, she did a wonderful job with the MC, and all the people that spoke. It was a good day. Congratulations to them. And we're also gonna be honoring Dr. John Laurel, who's retired. He's always retiring at the end of the month. He's always been a very quiet man a long, long time, when he was in vet school. And his knees and hips worked a lot better when he was in vet. But it doesn't take a whole lot of twisting and turning to, you know, deliver foals and calves and be on the ground to wear out some of those joints. I think one of the first things he's got on his agenda is to get some repair work done. So we wish him the best, as well as a white jean. He will be missed by his friends and clients, both furry and not so furry. Also a good friend, Bernie France, Reverend Bernie France. And his calling hours, the funeral was today. He was a classmate of mine from first grade on, and, you know... one of those guys who did not like authority, right? If you knew Bernie before his, you know, his, uh, conversion experience, uh, he was full of it and, and in a good way, you know? He wasn't a bully in any way. He was just a good classmate, a good guy, full of life. And, uh, he was a good example of the power of grace and redemption and, uh, through his life, bro. He made all the difference in the running people's lives. So, we send our condolences out to his family and, and may he rest in peace. Now, the people I've grown up today, Dr. Baller, uh, Jack Hewitt, Bernie France, Cindy Walls, Karen Wise. I mean, they're, those are folks that all, even when someone may get paid a lot or paid little, not paid at all, they don't, what, what do they have in common? They're all hourly focused on making people's lives better. It's a lesson we can learn from all those people and, uh, it's, it's, it makes their life better too. They do it because, you know, they're called to do it, so. That's all I've got for the night. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? Mr. McKeever?
Yes, uh, I was out at All Millar Park today and I got a few people complaining that the outhouse that's out there is, is full.
Okay. Well, they would call us.
I'm not, I'm.
They could pick up the phone and call us if it's.
Well, they sent it to me, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, we have, we have staff out there. It shouldn't be full. I mean, I don't, I'll find out what the pickup is on it, but they're usually on top of it, so.
Right, I, I was just saying, this is what I was told. It was full and.
Yeah.
Also, the restroom at the, uh, concession stand on the minor league field, uh, one restroom was out of order and, and it was the women's restroom, so. Uh, you know, the women don't even walk any further.
The restroom should be open though. I don't know where, what, the outhouse, I mean, the outhouse, not the house, the, uh, porta-pot.
Porta-pot, yeah. But I'm saying, that's what I was told.
Yeah, we should be open there. So, we'll check into it, but the restroom should be open there.
Okay, thank you.
I will check into it, but if anybody, the residents, I'll speak to you. If you have any issues like that, hey, pick up the phone. Don't wait for your next council meeting for a council member to say so. Pick up the phone calls, you know? We're happy to respond like that, so, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving on, uh, service safety director Wagner's report.
Well, Mr. Stoker saw our thunder. You're a.
I'm sorry.
Oh, right, yeah. We appreciate what you said about the streets, yeah. And, uh, we wanted to thank the voters that passed the levy way beyond our wildest expectations. And, uh, we didn't wanna take that levy for granted. Last time it passed sixteen forty, um, which is kind of considered a landslide electoral, you know, votes, but this time it was seventy to thirty, right? Sis knows a lot of, uh, she ran a very good campaign and supported Mr. Spiegel. Um, and we got a lot of work, you know, a lot of work on that. So, uh, we are happy to make sure the streets stay in good shape. And, um, some other good news, the state budget, uh, will be, the new gasoline tax raising, we're gonna get about an extra two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars next year, which we hopefully then, uh, we can, you know, catch up on some of the streets that over the last couple winters have gotten rough. As well as we talked about adding a staff member to, uh, you know, maybe concentrate just solely on sweeping, uh, because we get a little bit behind on that too sometimes, so. We're, we've been shorthanded really for a couple of years now. Okay, but anyway, thank you. Just remember next Monday is the first holiday of the summer season. I know you're all looking forward to that. Don't come to City Hall to pay any bills, 'cause we will not be here. Uh, garbage pickup will be on Tuesday, so if you're like me, you're on a Monday route, have your garbage out early, seven AM. Um, and just to let you know, if, if for some reason you don't get your garbage out and we miss you, call City Hall. Our guys will come back. They don't, you know, to do it as soon as they can, so. Try not to, you know, abuse it, but we'll, we'll let your garbage sit up there. Uh, All Millar Park pool has been delayed, uh, for several reasons, primarily because of weather and a couple of changes that need to be made in the, uh, with the state health board. And the key to poster, we expected it to be open by the third week of June. Postal food drive, uh, we had a response to the video we did on our Facebook page. We were very happy about that. There is over two thousand four hundred pounds of food, the most they've ever done. They were thrilled. And, uh, that, that food all stays locally here at, this, this, on this year went to the Methodist Food Bank. And, uh, there's a referral from Mr. Wagner. He wants to refer the final legislation request from ODOT for PID one zero two nine seven zero. And that's the quarter mile on State Route four north to Plating and Finance Committees. And that's it. That's just reported.
Any questions about the safety service director's report? Mr. Trucco?
Um, I see my, uh, All Millar Park for Mr. Wagner. Uh, I had a couple of men that worked at General Electric that have kids that play, play ball on the major field.
Yeah.
And they said that, uh, more than half the lights are burned out. There's like forty-seven light bulbs that are burned out.
We're aware of that. We got, we're getting a plan ready now together for the, okay, so.
Mr. Myers?
We're gonna get estimates right now to replace it, so.
While they did a very nice job paving, uh, Poplar Street to south of Oakwood there, uh, there's a horrible mess that was left in the intersection of Oakwood and Poplar.
Is it, or have they put the final code on that yet?
Yes, it was, it was all done on that.
Okay.
But on the part that they didn't do, it's like driving through a landmine. It's, so it's just all huge pieces.
Okay, so where is this again then?
Intersection of Poplar and Oakwood.
On the west side. Okay.
Which is actually more of the south side was. Yeah.
That's not good. They're usually very good about, you know.
Just look like a bunch of pieces fell out of their truck as it drove away.
Okay, we'll make sure it's cleaned up. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, you need a motion then to refer the final legislation request from ODOT for PID one oh two nine seven oh for the quarter mile on State Route four north, both Plating and Finance Committees.
Second.
Motion made, Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Law director, Mr. Ratliff.
I'll defer to the nine pieces of legislation.
Hey, did you mention your anniversary?
Yeah, that's, that's. Send the rest of your photo on the table. Thank you, the white and black. The hair is a lot darker.
Maybe it was a black and white photo.
But congratulations.
Same.
Okay, uh, moving on to the auditor.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any reports this evening, but I do have your favorite referrals. Oh, yes. Uh, we need several appropriations in the general fund. Uh, first, under security of persons and property, department, materials and supplies in the amount of one thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And that includes donations for Safety Town in the amount of a thousand twenty-four dollars sixty cents and a donation for the police K nine unit in the amount of eight dollars and ninety cents. Then also under general government, lands and buildings, capital outlay, we need ten thousand dollars. I am added to our lands and buildings improvement. This is for a new air conditioning unit and related wiring at the North End Fire Station. Plus, you may have noticed some issues that we had here in the building, uh, last week. Uh, yeah, it was, anyway, it was a sewer issue and we also.
Oh, the line out front?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, right on.
And we had some cleanup due to that that we need to take care of, so. So we need to kind of replenish that line. Also, we need an appropriation in the street fund, um, under streets, capital outlay, in the amount of six thousand dollars. This is for the ODOT paving on State Route four north between Quaker Road and the city corporation limits. Uh, I believe their estimate is that we would owe fifty-four hundred dollars, but I thought I'd kind of add that ten percent to that for the appropriation. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, any questions regarding these appropriations? Then I need a motion then, uh, for these to, uh, go into Finance Committee. The, uh, donation for Safety Town in the amount of a thousand twenty-four sixty and K nine unit in the amount of eight ninety. And also, uh, the ten thousand dollars appropriated from, that's general funds, right?
Yes.
That ten thousand dollars for a new air conditioning unit, related wiring at the North End Fire Station and appropriation in the street fund from unappropriated fund, uh, funds, six thousand dollars for that paving of State Route four north between Quaker Road and the city corporation limits. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We also have the auditor's statement of cash position dated April the thirtieth, two thousand nineteen before you. I need a motion to accept and file this.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Shock to accept and file the statement of cash position dated April the thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We also have the treasurer's report for March of twenty nineteen. I need a motion to accept and file this report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shock to accept and file the treasurer's report for March of twenty nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We have, nothing from the police chief or the. Oh, you also have the April twenty nineteen report that submitted and we'll take that up to the next committee. To review that, we know that. The police chief, nothing, police chief or fire chief? I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Shock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we have visitors' input, uh, regarding reports of standing in special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Now, we have nine pieces of legislation, one ordinance and, uh, eight resolutions. Ordinance number twenty-six, twenty nineteen, repealing and replacing ordinance number twenty, twenty nineteen, establishing the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and enacting that's placed legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, retroactive to January one, twenty nineteen, and declaring emergency, that is referred to the Finance Department. Resolution number two fourteen, twenty nineteen, I need to read this fiscal officer's certificate before we read the legislation. This is addressed to the council of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, from Attorney Joyce Schiffer, dated, uh, today, May twenty-one. As fiscal officer of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, I certify in connection with your proposed issue of notes to notes in the aggregate principal amount of two hundred thousand dollars to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds, to provide funds to pay costs of improving the cities all known apart by renovating, improving and otherwise improving the swimming pool and the storage facility, resurfacing and otherwise improving tennis courts, constructing, improving and otherwise improving a new pickleball court and providing supporting lighting, light site access and bridge improvements. In each case, together with necessary purposes and work incidental thereto, the improvements, that one, the estimated life or period of usefulness of each class of the improvements is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with sections one three three point twenty of the revised code is at least ten years, since each, each class of the improvements has by statute or by estimate an estimated life or period usefulness of not less than ten years or otherwise. If and to the extended portion of the proceeds of the bonds may be determined to be allocated to a class or classes having an estimated life or period of usefulness of less than ten years but at least five years, then the maximum maturity of the bonds would still be at least ten years by reason of a sufficient portion of the proceeds of the bonds being allocated to a class or classes having an estimated life or period of usefulness in excess of ten years, including those classes having an estimated life or period of usefulness of thirty years. If notes and, if, if notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year, following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years must be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds and three, the maximum maturity of the notes in June nineteen twenty, twenty thirty-three. Going ahead to the ordinance, ordinance number two fourteen, twenty nineteen, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of two hundred thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay costs of improving the cities all known apart by renovating, improving and otherwise improving the swimming pool and the storage facility, resurfacing and otherwise improving tennis courts, constructing, improving and otherwise improving a new pickleball court and providing supporting lighting, site access and bridge improvements. In each case, together with the necessary purposes and work incidental thereto, and declaring emergency. That is referred back to the Finance Committee. Resolution number two fifteen, twenty nineteen, I will read through.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but shouldn't that be ordinance twenty-seven, twenty nineteen? It, it says ordinance, but it's actually got a resolution number on it?
It should be a resolution.
It should be an ordinance.
The ordinance would be ordinance twenty-seven, yes.
Instead of twenty-two fourteen.
Instead of two fourteen, it should be twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven dash twenty nineteen.
So, all through the rest of the agenda, resolution two fourteen will be ordinance twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. So then going ahead to resolution number two fifteen, twenty nineteen, I will read through, um, section one. Therefore, a resolution enacted by the city of Bussaras of Crawford County, Ohio, herein after referred to as a city in the manner of the stated described project and declaring emergency be resolved by the council of the city of Bussaras, state of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected there to concur. Section one, project description, PID number one zero one four zero nine, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project to perform resurfacing of State Route nineteen from the intersection of State Route four to the intersection of State Route one hundred, Cary Road. Approximately zero point three miles of split appropriation are in this seven-mile resurfacing project within the city of Bussaras appropriation limits. This project is currently scheduled to be constructed in the summer of twenty twenty. That is referred back to the Plating Committee. Resolution. Shouldn't these, um, we'll just keep your units.
If you were gonna keep all these the same, ordinance round two fourteen is most say of the song, yeah.
Uh, resolution number two sixteen, twenty nineteen, hereby accepting one point three zero six acres of land donated by Richard and Helen Mickelik, uh, situated in the city of Bussaras at nine oh one Nevada Road, Bussaras, Ohio. That is referred back to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Resolution number two seventeen, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the service safety director in behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio to advertise for bids and entering great contractor contracts not to exceed the already budgeted three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for the East Ransfield Street and West Stone Street storm improvement. And finally, authorizing and directing the Bussaras city auditor to draw warrants or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring emergency. That is referred back to the Plankets Committee. Resolution number two eighteen, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to advertise for bids and entering great contractor contracts not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for the repair and replacement of traffic signals at Marion Road, Beal Avenue. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bussaras city auditor to draw warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring emergency. That is referred back to Public Lands and Buildings. Resolution number two nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Well, wait a minute. That should be Plating Committee.
Resolution two eighteen.
Two eighteen, yes, should be Plating.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, it's correct here.
Resolution number two nineteen, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to advertise for bids and entering great contractor contracts not to exceed eighty-two thousand six hundred dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for construction of Friendship Trail Bike Path. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bussaras city auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring emergency. That's referred back to the Finance. Resolution number two twenty, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to advertise for bids and entering great contractor contracts not to exceed four hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for the resurfacing of Arrowhead Drive. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bussaras city auditor to draw warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate. warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. That is referred to the Finance Committee. And finally, resolution number two twenty-one, two thousand nineteen, authorizing and directing the DeSires Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of DeSires, Ohio, to advertise for bids and entering great contractor contracts not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for the crushing of the pile of concrete and stone of the wastewater treatment plant, finally authorizing and directing the DeSires City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. That is referred to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
May I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
On resolution two seventeen, dated two thousand nineteen, am I supposed to have a stand?
You said two seventeen?
Yes.
Um, Luke, I would recommend you do so, um, but that, that involves issues that may impact your property.
Correct.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I got, uh, I got behind. I'm trying to look this up, uh, on the, on this, it says a hundred and ten thousand, twenty-one dash two thousand nineteen, but I don't see that in the...
On which one? Two twenty-one?
Two twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Wasn't it that plus ten percent?
Yeah.
It was a hundred thousand plus ten percent.
I just see that in the font, didn't it? But, okay.
Okay.
The only time in the minutes we actually talked about the ten percent was in the first, um, uh, topic, whatever that was, Marion, the traffic signal, Marion Beal.
But it was just ten percent.
But we traditionally always be ten percent when we have.
Well, I was just concerned because we, we invited you to the hundred thousand, so I couldn't get on any more fast, so. Okay. I guess I forgot that.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen is referred back to Finance. Ordinance twenty-seven dash two thousand nineteen is referred to Finance. Resolution two fifteen, two thousand nineteen is referred, referred to Plating. Resolution two sixteen, two thousand nineteen is referred to Public Lands and Buildings. Resolution two seventeen, two thousand nineteen is referred to Finance. Resolution two eighteen dash two thousand nineteen is referred to Plating. Resolution two nineteen dash two thousand nineteen is referred to Finance. Resolution two twenty dash two thousand nineteen is referred to Finance, and resolution two twenty-one dash two thousand nineteen is referred to Public Lands and Buildings. This is where any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone want to address counsel this evening? Do we need a recess? No? Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen, Employee Manpower. Finance is favorable to ordinance twenty-seven dash two thousand nineteen, the Bond Anticipation Note. Finance is favorable to resolution two seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, the West Stone, East Mansfield Sewer Project. Finance is favorable to resolution two nineteen dash two thousand nineteen, the Bike Path Bid, and Finance is favorable to resolution two twenty dash two thousand nineteen, Arrowhead Drive Bid.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Plating Committee?
Plating Committee is favorable to resolution two fifteen, two thousand nineteen, the ODOT paving of State Route Nineteen, Quaker Road. Plating Committee is favorable of resolution two eighteen, two thousand nineteen, for Marion Beal Traffic Signal Bid.
Okay, Public Lands and Buildings?
Public Lands and Buildings favorable to resolution two sixteen dash two thousand nineteen, uh, land donation, and Public Lands and Buildings also favorable to resolution two twenty-one, two thousand nineteen, the Concrete Pile Bid.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Sack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen, which is the Employee Manpower, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand nineteen.
Do I have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand nineteen, Employee Manpower is duly adopted. For the second and third readings, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand nineteen, which is the Bond Anticipation Note, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Was that, uh, Myers? Wireball? Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand nineteen, the Bond Anticipation Note is duly adopted. For resolution, um, for the second and third reading of proposed resolution number two fifteen dash two thousand nineteen, which is the ODOT paving of State Route Nineteen slash Quaker Road, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number two fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two fifteen dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number two fifteen dash two thousand nineteen, the ODOT paving of State Route Nineteen at Quaker and Quaker Road, uh, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution two sixteen dash two thousand nineteen, which is the land donation, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two sixteen, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two sixteen dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Schott?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two sixteen dash two thousand nineteen, the land donation is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution number two seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, which is West Stone, East Mansfield Street Sewer Project, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Abstaining.
Sack?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number two seventeen, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two seventeen dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Abstaining.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, the West Stone, East Mansfield Street Sewer Project is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two eighteen dash two thousand nineteen, which is the Marion Beal Avenue Traffic Signal Bid, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Yes, Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number two eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two eighteen dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two eighteen dash two thousand nineteen, the Marion Beal Traffic Signal Bid is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two nineteen dash two thousand nineteen, which is the Bike Path Bid, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Resolution number two nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two nineteen dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number two nineteen dash two thousand nineteen, the Bike Path Bid is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution two twenty dash two thousand nineteen, which is the Arrowhead Drive Bid, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two twenty dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.